[laughing] It was sad when your father was with child. She'd have been on a beautiful ass line. She took one look at my beautiful garden and told her father what she wanted more than anything in the world. Greens, greens, it's nothing but greens. Parsley, peppers, carrots, and some of these berries you want for the meal. And I said, "All right, but what?" Because I can't be the young and the dirty one tonight. He was throwing me, harassing me. He knew my name, they were breaking my rules, and ripping up the red, me my candy, my bear. I should have let them fell on them. Right there, for a time, you sound like a doll or a chair. But I let him have their baby and all those. And with words, however, I said, "There is fair because that you have the baby that you want for fair." And he passed away. I thought I'd been more than reasonable. What hell would I know what your father also hid in his pocket? Bees, the special bees. I let her know I didn't know he stole the five bees. I was watching him frog that go with the wall, get fed, crushed, the life he likes. And that's another story, never mind anyway, unless it fits, they take my baby, my place. Oh, don't take away the baby, they squished, they squished. What I did, and I can't, will never be reached. Your father cried, and your mother slept. We're extra mad that I did that. I'm just sorry I'm still not far enough. Now I let a little fell on them. You too, son. That your family tree would always be the fair one. So, someone must send us some more seeds in my garden, right? My next of kin. When I'm telling you the same, I tell kings and queens, don't ever, ever, ever mess around with my greens. [applause]
Wow, that was great. That was good. That was wonderful.
Father said, "Sure, that head, not to lay or be missed." I should be in her advice, but he seemed so nice. And he showed me things, many beautiful things that I hadn't felt before. They were all mine, had so I never had here. And I guess so here, though I never had here. And he made me feel excited, so excited I'm scared. He was like a pumpkin, with a big grin. Wonder I know what was in store? Was this thing for a dare? Then I really got scared, so excited I'm scared. But he was pretty close, and he swallowed me down, down the door, climbing up. He liked me with that I had a long ago, and I know now. Maybe by a book, things that I hadn't known before. Do not put your face in the cake and all good. They will not throw dead to the wind as they should. And to extra dangerous strangers, even flowers under danger. And scary is exciting, nice is different than good. Now I know, don't be scared, bring me fright, be prepared, in the night you live a life. And a little bit, no, I don't want that. [applause]
The full cast of 22 members invite you to attend their musical smash Into the Woods We'll also make the show available to school field trips on October the 21st. Please visit their website for more information. And they wish to add that all board members are gifted two complimentary VIP tickets, and they can be picked up at the wheel call table. Thank you very much.
Before we call the meeting to order, I would like to announce if anyone would like to come up.
For citizens to be heard, citizens are asked to complete a card, and the cards are at the table at the entrance?
Yes.
Okay. Indicating their desire to address the Germantown Board of Education. If you will give the completed card to the Executive Secretary, or if you just want to put it up here with the rest of the cards, that would be fine. Comments must be constructive. The School Board will not entertain any disrespectful comments regarding the elected officials. Citizens will be allowed three minutes to speak. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. First on the agenda is our moment of silence. We have made great strides in the past 14 months as the Germantown Municipal School District. As you saw, and as you will hear, our students, our faculty, our staff, and our administration, and this board are working as hard as we can to make this a successful school district. We need your support and not your criticism. We, your board, are here for your children, all of them. Let's don't forget that, and we promise we won't. If you will bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. If you would please rise and join me in the place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Wheel call, please.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Delai?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we come to recognitions and awards. It's okay, I'm gonna go to the microphone. You may not know the name Jana Chow, but you will. Choi, excuse me. I asked her what her name was, and now I've already screwed it up. You may not know her name, but you will. There's a very good chance you're going to know it very soon. The Houston High School freshman, this Houston High School freshman, is the top golfer in Tennessee, and 18th in the country.[586.12][586.12][applause] This weekend, she returned from France, where she represented the United States in the Evian Championship Junior Cup. Jana already has an impressive resume, winning the Bubba Conley Tournament in Memphis last year, getting to the semifinals in the 2015 U.S. Girls Junior Championship, and qualifying for this year's USGA Women's Amateur. Currently a member of the Houston High School golf team, a well-rounded Jana, says her first goal this year is helping her team to a state title. I have already invited her to play golf with me. I need some tips. And she said her goal is to make it to the LPGA Tour, and I have no doubt she's going to do it. I wish you the best of luck. Congratulations.
Thank you.[644.54][644.54][applause]
Well, come back, come back. We have something for you. And her handicap is a plus-two. Mine's a 30. Ms. Kushy Patel, would you like to come up here? Is that right? Okay. I didn't screw your name up, did I? Okay. She's a 4th grade student at Farmington Elementary School. Last week, Ms. Patel competed and won a national art contest. She took first prize with a poster design aimed at the dangers of poison in the home. The National Poison Prevention Week Council chose her work as the top in the entire country.[711.69][711.69][applause] Her poster, which will be released in 2016, was a colored pencil flare pin rendering of a child reaching for a medicine bottle while mother is seen in the distance, not attending to the child's grave mistake. She is no stranger to the artist limelight. Last year, she won high honors for her Memphis in May poster design as well. She most enjoys working with pastels and currently has big plans to create something special for the upcoming Smokey the Bear poster contest. From Houston High, we'd like to recognize six students as being academic leaders. Last week, these students were named national merit semifinalists. Congratulations are in order to Jessica Tran, Timothy Lang, Katrina Jankoff, Nicholas Culver, Sarah O, and Alan Gann. If y'all would come up, please.[797.19][797.19][applause] Would one of you like to come over here and tell us what it takes to be a national merit finalist?[814.82][814.82][laughter] Come on. Show me your leadership skills. Come on.
Okay. So, what it takes?
Yes, ma'am.
I would say it takes hard work and dedication, and I think definitely support from the parents, and from teachers and community.
My name's Dan Had Allen. I'm the Assistant Superintendent. Kinda to change gears, we just saw the student world, and I think it's wonderful. I can't think of a more creative opening than watching the two Riverdale artists perform. Congratulations, Houston High School students. Young lady, I may want to get your autograph before you make it on the tour. Just that, when we call teachers up, there's a couple things we want to do, is we want to recognize some of our staff members. And to start off, you're gonna hear about some administrators and some special people that have done some outstanding work in our system. But then after that, you're gonna hear about tenured teachers, and I'm gonna go over those tenured teachers. And I ask when those tenured teachers come up that they stay up here for a picture. So, and then after that, we're going to feed you with cake, sugar you up, and get the teachers out of here, because all good teachers need their beauty sleep. So there'd be a little bit of a pause after this presentation. First on the list is Andrea Little. And Andrea Little is a Houston High School College and Career Placement Counselor. I do not know how many years she's been there, but I do know that every time I go out there, she is one of the most child-friendly, supportive people that I've seen since I've been back in the Germantown School District. We had received a letter from a parent, and this parent had some difficulty getting her son registered into college. And the young man was a, and I gotta read it, and I apologize. He'd been accepted to college, but she wasn't sure why he had not been accepted with, because of his academic ability. He was a Presidential Scholar, and for some reason, he'd been getting rejected. And it dawned on her that when she got the phone call from the mom, who could not understand, "Hey, what's going on with my son? I need him out of the house. It's time for him to go. Help me." She made a call to UT Knox, and before you know it, he's in the University of Tennessee, Knoxville. It is now seven years later removed, and he is just finishing up law school. And we call that going above and beyond, but we also call that strategy, it's always good to know a good lawyer. But on that same terms, the parent now has a senior in high school, and he's going through the same process. And because of that level of trust, who does that parent call? She calls Ms. Little. So I do want to call Ms. Little up here, because I think it's wonderful, the personal touch that she's given to these students at this time of transition in their lives.[1017.12][1017.12][applause]
Thank you. Do you like to say something?
Not really, but thank you very much.
I was just joking, but I was curious what she was gonna say.[1034.75][1034.75][laughter]
Thank you so much. Thank you for your appearance.
This next staff member had the privilege to meet in the process of onboarding, so she's new to us. And she, I don't know if she's here, I hope she's here. She, I also got to walk down to her classroom and see her teach, and she is magical. I don't know if you've heard of Ron Clark, but he is really an exemplary teacher out of Atlanta. And she was just as magical watching her work with maybe 4th graders, if I have it right. And I'm kinda looking for Dana Washington. Oh, 2nd graders. I've always been $2 short of you. Come on up, Ms. Washington. And just to kinda give you a background, she was diagramming sentences, which I wish I could go back and learn myself. And she had the students put on surgical masks and act like doctors as they diagram these sentences. Really a creative welcome addition to Dogwood in the 2nd grade, so I do want to recognize Mr. Legault is an administrator at Houston High School. I've known Mr. Legault for several years in different capacities. He is someone that we were lucky to get from Shelby County Schools. He actually worked in the Discipline Office with Student Services in the bigger system. He came over to us, he's now working at Houston High School, and he has a vision for the students that have IEPs, Individual Educational Plans, and that are on that focus. And he does stuff that really personalizes...[1129.58][1129.58][laughter]
You do want the mic.
He really personalizes education, and he is honoring the work that the teachers are doing in Houston High School through a daily, or I'm sorry, weekly update of all the good things that are going on with that particular population there at the high school. And I do really believe this, the special ed teachers, they are really the gifted teachers, because they really have some strategies that they use that everyone would benefit. So I appreciate what Rob's doing with those teachers, and also with those students in
A small story about Rob. It's a small world, but Rob graduated high school with my niece, and I have a lot of stories on Rob.[1185.33][1185.33][laughter]
I could say something totally inappropriate, so I gotta step back. Something about the niece saying he's a bad kid, but I'm not gonna go there. With that in mind, the next person, though, this is, and I, parents, you know, if you're out there, thank you, but at the same time, I remember having a conversation with Mr. Manuel. I don't know who this guy is, but these parents are wearing me out trying to get him over to our school system. Flat-out email after email, and I was almost thinking, being biased as an interviewer, I don't want anything to do with this guy. Well, he comes in in the interview, and he floors us in the interview, and I thought, Lori, that opened my mind a little bit more. I was humbled. I was humbled by his service mentality, his passion, his vision, and what his goodness and his heart is for kids. And Mr. Ruiz, if you could come on up.[1239.01][1239.01][applause] I don't know if I mentioned it, he's a 2nd-year administrator at Houston Middle School, and he's known for being innovative and creative, and really being student-centered, which is what we want in our system. The second portion, the last portion, is to honor tenured people. And this, I was fortunate enough to go to some training sessions here recently at Jackson, Tennessee, that talks about a good teacher, and the different traits and variables that make up a good teacher. And if you haven't seen it, don't look at it, because it is a little bit mind-boggling, the number of indicators and domains that they are trying to get across in that classroom to move the student achievement barometer. But I think there's even more to it. There's professionalism in what they do outside the school to help kids. And there's also the environment that they set up for the decency of those kids, to make them feel safe, and also to feel comfortable to make mistakes. And I think that's a huge piece when you watch a good teacher. There is an air of, hey, this is a fun environment, but it's also a freeing environment, where I can be me, I can make mistakes, and learn from those mistakes. These teachers, there's about 20 of them, maybe more, some were not able to attend. So I'm gonna name their names first, and if they are in the audience, come on up. It's good to see you. And so the ones that have gotten tenure that I do not think are SVP'd are, and these teachers are from Farmington, Anna Brignoli, Bethany First, Kristen Holloman, Marlo Harris, Wendy Wise, and now I'm switching to Houston Middle School, Brittany Riley, and then Houston High School, William Burford, Jason Mittelkopf, and then lastly, Riverdale, Amy Byrd, and Corinne Martin. To get tenure, and I can talk about them, because they're not here, to defend themselves, tenure is a process. It's a process where on that 4th and 5th year, you're moving away from the probationary life into the professional life. And you really look at that 4th and 5th year, and they have to score at a level that is above expectation, or way above expectation. And those 4 and 5s, that means you're moving students at a clip that is 2 years or 3 years quicker than what's expected. I said that wrong. 1 year or 2 years quicker than what was expected. So they do all this, you do some qualitative observations, and then you do the quantitative observation, or quantitative data collection, which is the testing portion of the process. These teachers with that tenure, and the law has changed a little bit, you can lose your tenure status, because the state wants you to be at a top-performing level all the time. So there's a little bit more pressure and buy-in to these people to continue on with their professionalism. But I do think it is a wonderful honor to, 1, be with us, choosing, and your choice with Germantown School System, but then, 2, is to put the work and the hours and the sweat equity into this process. So I am gonna call those people up. I do ask that you stay up here for the picture. It is, you know, I'm touched that you're with us. It's an honor to tell you guys that you are tenured. You're the first group in the Germantown Municipal School District to obtain tenure. Don't be the first group to lose it. Just joking.[1444.86][1444.86][laughter] Starting, and starting with Dogwood, and some people I know better than others, and they all, you know, I wish I could personalize the process, but I'm gonna go, somebody went quick for the sake of time. Ashley Lunne Dyke, she is an artist.[1457.86][1457.86][applause] Ashley, I hope I said your name correctly. I think he started a 5K club at Farmington that just made the news. He looks like a runner. Heather Pfeifer, she's also at Farmington.[1491.86][1491.86][applause] Susan Pennington, I think I saw Susan.[1500.65][1500.65][applause] Tammy Wilson, the last teacher from Farmington.[1509.24][1509.24][applause] Houston Middle School, I'm gonna say this, because she, it's Jennifer North, she also goes by Katie Gab.[1526.74][1526.74][applause] Houston High School, I'm gonna name several names. I am alphabetically challenged Victoria Jordan. I do want to personalize this one. This person I have not met, but for 2 consecutive years, people have come up to me and said, "This guy really differentiates and works with kids at all ability levels and reaches out." So, you know, I'm dying to find out who this person is. If he looks like he's aged, I think they just had a newborn baby here about 3 weeks I feel sorry for this person, you never want to make something personal, but I think my daughter would trade me to have this person as her dad, and that's Candace Placence. She just does a wonderful deal. My daughter's a senior at the hospital.[1664.24][1664.24][applause] Going to Riverdale, I had a staff ethics violation. I turned myself in. I am a Buckeye. Mr. Juno, did you catch that? I am a Buckeye. And with that in mind, this person, I saw her with a Michigan jersey on, and I said, "You have to burn that." And one of our staff ethics violations, or one of our staff ethics principles, is to treat people with respect and have courtesy. And after I said, "Hey, you gotta burn that jersey," I realized that I broke that staff ethics policy.[1698.21][1698.21][laughter] But I'm so glad she did not wear that jersey, so if you're a Michigan fan, you can do whatever you want with this. But her name is Janet Carlin. We accidentally lost her. And lastly, Angela Darter from Riverdale as well.[1726.42][1726.42][applause]
You just got healed, didn't you?
Just to stay consistent, would any one of you like to tell us what tenure means? With this in mind, I do, out of all, you know, all joking aside, I cannot think of a better honor than having a group of solid professionals. They are in the trenches every day, and I don't want to use that word trench. We are blessed and privileged from all the indicators that I see to work with such a fine group of students, whether it be the little biddies or the older ones. There are really, you really are a community that values education. And from, you know, my, from my take, thank you very much to these teachers. Thank you for choosing us as a system, and congratulations on receiving tenure. Picture time, and then we're going to take a little slight pause to eat cake, and then get people out the door if they like to leave at this time.